This is Board of Education, January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two, regular Board of Education meetings. I'll turn it over to Dr. Caldwell for the opening announcement.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for attending our board meeting. I'll begin with the opening announcement. Adequate public notice of this meeting was provided by the Secretary of the Board on January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, to the Home News Tribune, Star Ledger, and the Clerk of the City of New Brunswick. The time and location of this meeting and all meetings of this body are posted in City Hall Seventy-Eight, Byrd Street, New Brunswick. Roll call, Mr. General.
Mr. Ordorno.
Here.
Ms. Medina Hernandez.
Here.
Mr. Ortiz.
Here.
Mrs. Seawood.
Here.
Ms. Solis. He is excused. Mr. Spencer.
Here.
Ms. Varela.
Here.
Sevilla.
Here.
Dr. Caldwell.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Wonderful. Um, before the, uh, flag salute, the next regular Board of Education meeting will be held Tuesday, February fifteenth, beginning at seven P. M. The location to be determined. So, uh, Dr. Johnson, would you lead us in the flag salute?
Yes, I will. Ready salute. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
America.
Of the United States of America.
To the Republic of which is.
We stand one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Justice for all. The, um, I assume, uh, Dr. Johnson or Mr. General, that the, uh, school board recognition, are we gonna hold that till next month?
Uh, no, I'm gonna actually, uh, take that over right now. Is that okay?
Okay, good. I'll turn it over to you. Item number three. Yep.
Thank you. Um, January is School Board Recognition Month, and we would like to take this opportunity to acknowledge our Board of Education members for their commitment to the students of New Brunswick. What I would like to do now is just read a proclamation signed by Governor Phil Murphy, and just bear with me because there are many due to where's, a few due to where's, whereas, there's about six, and I'll try and get through these. The state of New Jersey proclamation, whereas New Jersey Public Schools serve nearly one point four million children in pre-kindergarten through twelfth grade, and whereas New Jersey's five thousand local Board of Education members and the charter school trustees devote countless hours without remuneration to the oversight of school district operations, including finances, policy, curriculum, and staffing, and whereas, as the policymaking bodies of the public school districts, New Jersey Local Boards of Education endeavor to meet the challenges facing public schools and to help students attain the education necessary to excel in college and in the workplace and to enable them to compete in a global economy, and whereas, local boards of education have contributed to New Jersey being among the leading states in measures of academic quality such as national assessment of educational progress scores and the preparation for college through advanced placement courses and other curricular offerings, and whereas, the New Jersey School Boards of Education has declared January twenty twenty-two to be the School Board Recognition Month, and whereas, by making meaningful contributions to public education, the dedicated members of local school boards have greatly enhanced the quality of life in our state. Now therefore, I Philip D. Murphy, Governor of the state of New Jersey, do hereby proclaim January twenty twenty-two as School Board Recognition Month. And I would just like to just add to that by saying that our nine elected board members are public servants and advocates who dedicate countless hours of their time without pay to ensure we develop the next generation of leaders. Our board members are instrumental in ensuring that we create safe and nurturing environments to allow our students to reach their goal. I wanna thank you for deeply caring, we wanna thank you for deeply caring, about our students, families, staff, and holding us accountable to the community we serve. This recognition month is a great reminder, particularly given how uniquely challenging the past two years have been, how grateful we all should be for their service. Thank you so much. That concludes my presentation.
Dr. Johnson, thank you so, so very much. I, I can, on behalf of the board, we're just grateful for that recognition, and it's just an honor working with you and your staff and the community and the students, so, um, it's just, um, it's just a blessing. So, thank you, thank you so very much for that.
Thank you, Dr. Caldwell, and we have sent a small token of appreciation to each board member.
Thank you so, so very much. Um, uh, Mr. General, I know the student representative who's not here with me is having some trouble getting in, so I'll, uh, we'll do the, the voting for the minutes. I'll reach out to him.
Okay.
Is there a motion to accept the minutes, December twenty-first?
So moved.
Second.
Is there a second? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Ordorno.
Yes.
Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
Ortiz.
It's already been.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
I abstain.
Ms. Varela.
I abstain.
Sevilla.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell. Dr. Caldwell.
Rich?
Yes, sir.
Yes, yes, um, I'm yes on that. I was, I was talking to the student, the student representative, it's so, it's kicking her out of the, the phone numbers. Is there any reason that they're doing that? The, the student representative, so, um, uh, I'll turn over to item number five, the superintendent's report, Dr. Johnson.
Yes, thank you. Uh, this is the superintendent's report for, uh, the month of December. Uh, for the month of January, though, two thousand twenty-two, we have enrolled nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine students. Uh, for the month of December, there was one case of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. There were ninety-four suspensions. Our staff attendance was ninety-two percent. Our student attendance was eighty-eight percent. For the month of December, there were seventy-seven number of positive cases for students, and there were a hundred and six, uh, positive cases for employees. On January fifth, we provided COVID-nineteen testing, testing for our district staff, and we had a positivity rate of six point five percent. On December twenty-eighth, we announced that as precautionary measure, and due to a record high number of COVID cases, we made the decision to return to virtual instruction for two weeks following the holiday break, which was effective January third through January fourteenth. Today, Tuesday, January eighteenth, we welcome our students back to in-person instruction. I would like to thank our food service team for continuing on our meal distribution during this time. I would like to thank all our administrators, teachers, and support staff for their continued efforts to keeping our students learning, regardless of whether our students are attending school remotely or in person. I would also like to thank our school nurses for working around the clock on our COVID-nineteen reporting, contact tracing, and maintaining a safe environment throughout our district. There has been some updates to quarantine and isolation guidance from the CDC, the New Jersey Department of Health, and the Department of Education, which has recommended a quarantine and isolation period change from ten days to five days, with recommended guidance. For our students, however, we are currently determining how this impacts our schools during a very high transmission rate in Middlesex County, and for the time being, we have continued to follow our existing guidelines regarding students who test positive for COVID-nineteen or has been identified as a close contact. However, students considered close contacts who are fully vaccinated or who have tested positive for COVID-nineteen within the last ninety days will not be required to quarantine while they are symptom-free. As regards to athletics, as of now, athletic practice and events will continue, continue, uh, following our existing vaccination and testing requirements. However, individual teams or events may need to be paused for the safety of all participants in the event of an increase in COVID exposures. We are continuing our efforts of making COVID testing available to all students and staff on Mondays and Fridays in the district, and this weekend, through a partnership with the New Jersey Black Women Physician Association, we were able to host another very successful vaccine clinic on Saturday, January fifteenth. We were able to administer over four hundred first dose, second dose, and boost to students, parents, and staff. We also administered over one hundred COVID-nineteen tests. Thank you, and that concludes my remarks.
Is there a motion to accept the superintendent's report? Thank you, Dr. Johnson.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please, Mr. General.
Mr. Ordorno.
Yes.
This is Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Seawood.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Ms. Varela.
Yes.
Sevilla.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
All right, thank you again, Dr. Johnson. Thank you again, Dr. Johnson. Um, we'd like to move now to the student, uh, board representatives. Ashley Caldwell.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Uh huh.
Okay. Uh, hello, my name is Ashley Caldwell, and I will be presenting the student board representative's report. I hope you all had a wonderful break and holiday season. Today marked the welcome return to in-person learning from January third to January fourteenth. All students engaged in virtual learning. Athletic competitions and practices were stopped over winter break in early January. Thankfully, our programs are up and running, and we are all excited to hit the halfway point of the year in a few weeks. This concludes the student representative's report.
Thank you, uh, Ashley. Appreciate, uh, appreciate the report.
You are muted. You can mute or unmute yourself by pressing star six.
Yes, Mr. President, good evening. The facility committee, uh, met on January the eighteenth, I mean, I'm sorry, uh, met past Wednesday. As previously reported, we have completed the air conditioning projects for all the classrooms and related spaces at Roosevelt, Lincoln, Livingston, with the exception of the gymnasium at Roosevelt. We have authorized DMR architects to start the design drawings for the air conditioning of Roosevelt Gym. We are currently planning for the construction of this project during the, the summer. We will update you as this project progresses. At the gym, gymnasium addition at New Brunswick High School, we have authorized DMR architects to start to develop designs for a possible addition to the high school. This addition would, would be comprised of auxiliary gym with weight room and the sports, support spaces. We will update you as this project also progresses. The Blanquita B. Valente Community School Project, DMR architect has completed the construction documents for owner final review. We are in the process of finalizing our review related to the GMP proposal provided by Epic Construction. The final educational approval was received from the Department of Education on August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one. As of October nineteenth, NJDCA buildings reviewed approvals have been released for structural steel under slab plumbing work, fire protection, site and civil, footings and foundations, and the grease trap. Elevator, elevator plan review release was re, re, received on August the sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and partial electrical, electrical underground plan review was re, re, received on September seventh, two thousand twenty-one. Treatment works approval, TWA, August the eleventh, two thousand twenty-one. Water main extension permit, August twentieth, two thousand twenty-one. Stormwater management plan review conditional approval, August twentieth, two thousand twenty-one. The Delaware Varus Canal Commission approval, September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Full site soil erosion and sediment control plan approval, September twentieth, two thousand twenty-one. All pre-construction remedial actions have been completed. The underground tanks have been removed, the, the holes have been properly filled, and the job trailers have been delivered to the site. Site demolition, clearing, and evac, evacuation of both detention basins and the grand, grading of the building pad has been completed. Atlantic Engineering, the company providing special testing and inspection, has been on site for the inspection and testing services related to the stormwater basin excavation and the building pad. Additionally, Atlantic is on site to verify that all specifications are met related to the concrete specification. This includes verifying proper temperatures for the pouring of the concrete and as well as verifying the compressive strength of the concrete. Evacuation work for footings, foundations, and form work, including rebar, and concrete is currently ongoing. The pouring of concrete foundation has started. Work on-site utilities under slab utilities and the slab on grade will continue through the end of this month. The start of structural steel erection has been pushed out to April of two thousand twenty-two. Completion of the school is still scheduled for August, two thousand twenty-three. That, Mr. President, concludes my report.
Thank you so much for that very, very thorough report. Um, it's nice to see a lot of progress is being made, very, very exciting. Very, very exciting for the students of New Brunswick. Um, moving on, we'll move to, uh, Patricia Varela, uh, the Chair of the Athletic Committee.
Good evening, everyone. Um, New Brunswick has had our sports run back to their normal schedule. Our winter season was up and running before winter break, but due to several positive cases among our student athletes, we paused sports for winter break and the returning week. New Brunswick is committed to the safety of all of our student athletes, and we are testing everyone twice a week regardless of their vaccination status. We have been able to catch several cases before they interacted with their teammates, which has allowed our programs to get back to full speed as fast as possible. Our athletics program are taking every precaution possible as well as limiting, um, student athletes to two fans per athlete. This includes basketball games and wrestling matches. This allows us to limit the number of people in the gym for games or matches and allows the number of fans to spread out in the stands to avoid any close contact. New Brunswick has also been the host of several events this year, all events with limited fans to provide a safe environment for all. Our girls' wrestling team has hosted several girls' wrestling jamborees, which is where several teams bring their girls to wrestle, and the girls get to wrestle each team. The boys' wrestling team hosted a quad meet recently on January fifteenth at the middle school, which included four teams and three wrestling mats, which were happening at Primal Community. Lastly, the track team will host our second Zebra shot put meet on January twenty-second. And lastly, we had another student athlete commit to college in the fall. Alexandra Tucker, better known as Lexi, committed to the College of Mount St. Vincent in the fall to play basketball. Congratulations to Ms. Lexi. That'll be all for me.
Thank you for that to report. Now, we have, uh, we have an athletic, uh, financial report.
We do have a December two thousand twenty-one finance report, yes.
Okay, is there a motion to accept that report?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Ordorno.
Yes.
This is Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Spencer.
Is this a reconciliation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yes.
Ms. Varela.
Yes.
Sevilla.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
We'll now move to item number nine, the Curriculum Policy Committee Report. This is Emma L. Seawood, Chairperson.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, the Curriculum and Policy Committee has met, uh, this afternoon, and, um, we had one presentation during the curriculum period. This was on the, uh, results for the, uh, from the fall two thousand twenty-one Star Strong statewide assessment data. Uh, as you all know, last year, the, uh, state assessment, uh, requirement was waived. However, um, we were given the task of completing a new assessment, and they labeled it Star Strong, and it was specified to be completed during fall, um, in person. So, uh, we were able to get a good representation of students. Uh, participation was good. Uh, now, the Star Strong assessment presented, produced information to be used as a standard-based complement to the resources used by educators in the classrooms to evaluate the needs of students. We administered, uh, quickly, in person, and provided immediate results, satisfied federal statewide assessment requirements to administer general assessments in English Language Arts, Mathematics, and Science only. Uh, and this is for, uh, the twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one school year. Based on a subset of, uh, prioritized prior year academic standards to provide a data point on the level of support, uh, uh, students may need to engage or, uh, obtain grade level content. In, uh, for the English Language Arts portion, four thousand seven hundred twenty students were tested, uh, and discovered grades four through ten. For math, four thousand seven hundred ninety-eight students, uh, participated, and that was grades four through ten. In science, one thousand nine hundred thirty-nine students, uh, participated, and this is only for grades six, nine, and twelve. And the, the assessment results were divided, uh, specified three support levels. Uh, level one, strong support, level two, some support, and three, less support is needed. Results across all three tests showed that overall, students in the lower grades require more support than students in the upper grades. Um, and again, remember, uh, for the lower grades, especially grade four, those students are, were being tested on the skills that, uh, needed to be mastered for grade three. But I remind you, they have not been in school consistently for a year and a half. That makes it kinda difficult. We have some catching up to do. Now, from the, uh, subgroups, uh, students with disabilities require greater support than students overall in, uh, English Language Arts and Science. However, students with disabilities in grades four to six require the same level of support in math as students overall. I thought that was interesting. Uh, and intervention strategies have been identified for each of the areas, and the Curriculum and Instruction Department has been working to tease out those interventions and, uh, make sure staff is more comfortable and providing a lot of, uh, professional development in those three areas, again, English Language Arts, Mathematics, and Science. And that is, this is a report that has to be submitted to, uh, to state. Uh, we, um, did receive some resolutions, and they are included on the consent agenda, and we are referring them for board approval. We also were notified of a, uh, mandated policy. However, uh, we wanted to, we didn't get a chance to take, uh, a close look at it, and that reason, we're not going to make any recommendations as Mr. General, uh, indicated, so it has been pulled from the consent agenda. We also looked at another policy, and, uh, these two policies will be brought back as needed when we finish, uh, because one is mandated. And, um, that completes my report.
You, uh, Mrs. Seawood, I appreciate, uh, I appreciate the report. Um, the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey, report item ten. Um, just briefly, the commission is, uh, uh, obviously, the students that are special needs are the most vulnerable, and so, um, the commission's taken every precaution to make sure that they're safe and still able to receive the education that, um, that they, that they deserve. And so, um, um, so it's been, um, they've actually done a very, very good job, so. Um, I'll move now to item number twelve, the public comments. I understand we have two people who signed in advance for the, uh, the comments, Mr. General.
Yes, the first person I'll call the microphone is Mr. Cradable.
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, well, I'll start by addressing the seven of you who were elected to the board, and I just wanna point out that, uh, and as you're patting yourselves on the back here, I just wanna remind those who have not been attending the board meetings for as long as I have that this board, just a few years ago, would give the public five minutes to comment and question about your resolutions, and an additional five minutes for open questions from the public. And, uh, you know, Dr. Caldwell, you were the one in charge who, um, quietly took away one of those opportunities some years ago, and as you know, this board has continued to chip away at the public's right and ability to comment and question you at these meetings, and now we're down to three minutes, and you have to sign up twenty-four hours in advance, and, I don't know, maybe you can help square this for me. How is it safe to reopen the entire school system, but it's not safe to have this meeting in the New Brunswick High School?
The, uh, uh, Mr. General, did you want to say anything about, about that?
I don't have anything to add.
Yeah, yeah. There's no comment, Charlie.
Okay, uh, I, I will pick up where I left off last time, let you know I presented you with information about a, a student being charged with defiant trespassing the day before Thanksgiving. This was as a result of a criminal investigation by New Brunswick Police into a major fight that occurred that day, and I just wanted to get some clarity on what you think, uh, took place and, and why a student was charged with defiant trespassing.
And, and Charlie, the, um, as you recall, today was the first day that students were back, so in answer to your first question, obviously, this decision was made at the time when, um, when students were, uh, were at home on virtual learning, and I have just emailed you, I just sent you another email as, uh, as we're talking, to indicate that part of the- indicate that part of the challenge with reporting is that, that there are all sorts of assumptions that are made. If someone was arrested, unless you have defendant evidence that was related to something else, which you don't, and so often in your paper, you are actually reporting things that you're making assumptions that things are connected without the proof. So there is no proof, and so I think it's important if you report, make sure you report on things that you actually know are the facts, and that's all.
Sure, sure. Well, I have, I have been referred to the Board of Education for answers about this, so that's why I'm asking you the questions, and I'm hoping you can provide some of these facts. So, you know, to that end, are you going to be able to explain what happened on that day?
No, while there's criminal, this is the board attorney, while there's criminal charges pending, we will make no statements or comments on the facts until the case is fully vetted in court.
Okay. Well, then I'll just finish up by speaking to the two members of the board who have recently joined, and I'm gonna just ask you real nicely, I hope that you can work with your colleagues on the board to give the public more of an opportunity to speak. There's no reason to cut it back from five minutes to three minutes. You were there the night that it happened, you saw the lack of an explanation from the board president, and I think that if you want to start off on the right foot and do something to support not just me, but the, the parents and the students who, who show bravery and come to the microphone at your meetings, to give them, you know, a little bit more of your time and, and respect by, by restoring that, that five minutes, and, and while you're at it, restore the, the five minutes on the resolutions as well. I think that would be a great way to start off your term on the, on the board, and I hope that you can, you know, make that policy change for the better, because it's been going in the wrong direction, and I do want to wish everyone a happy and healthy two thousand twenty-two. Thanks for your time.
Thanks, Charlie. Thank you. Rich, who's next?
Yes, sir. The next member of the public to speak is Ms. Danielle Moore. Ms. Moore?
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
I would just say, starting off, I was saying Happy New Year to everyone. Hopefully, you can be in Happy New Years, but due to where I'm disappointed to see where, how you feel that it's not safe for forty people, not even forty people, to be in the auditorium, to have a meeting for us to speak, and while it's okay for a thousand students to be inside, can't stay six feet apart in a meeting, how do you feel that it's safe not to have the meeting, but it's safe to go back to school? And one thing I, I can't say is true, but one thing I'm gonna speak on, due to where I'm hearing a lot of parents are not even getting these messages, messages of how many students have been testing positive for COVID nineteen, due to where, what? I'm not, excuse me, not students, it says individuals, due to where another message came out this morning, four more people with, through the high school, tested positive? Come on, if you still got cases coming back positive, I know it's better to learn in school, but come on, it's better to be safe than sorry, due to where you wouldn't listen to me when I gave you heads up saying, oh, New Brunswick was not gonna be able to go back to school for two to four weeks. Dr. Caldwell, Dr. Johnson, you were against me, but I will say finally, thank you to Mayor Cahill, after I showed all the evidence of how many, over thirty people were testing positive with COVID nineteen. I will say thank you to Mayor Cahill, where he did speak up mandatory math and say that it wasn't safe to go back to school. But it's a shame where you won't take the time to listen to someone, where especially where I'm the person where, like I said, I warned you ahead of time, but wow, you did not listen. One thing I surely will speak on as far as with fifty Jersey Avenue, I do not feel that, that that is gonna be safe enough for our school, due to where that is surrounded by five places with liquor license, and as of this week that just passed through, where four women were sexually harassed, where I was one of them, a postal employee was one of them, a gas attendant was one of them, and another woman was one of them, in that same area where you have so many people drinking on space and K two, where while going around, touching people's rear end, grabbing them, I do, I, I say better for me than a child, but I think the Board of Education, the Police Department, the mayor needs to get this together if you're really gonna have this for school with eleven hundred students over there walking through there, where you have too many men drinking, doing drugs, and this is the worst area ever, due to where, like I said, being surrounded by five bars or liquor stores in one area within two blocks, two to three block range. But like I said, due to where I would say, better yet, me as a grown woman than a child, but due to where I do not feel the Police Department is doing their job in making any area safe in New Brunswick, other than Rutgers Village, where the mayor stays and majority of the council stays. But come on, New Brunswick Police Department, how?
Ms. Moore, can you, I'm sorry, it was, I thought you were wrapping it up. You're, you're up to three minutes and twenty-five seconds. Sorry to cut you off there. Is there anything that you wanted to say as a closing statement?
Just, just please warn the Police Department that, okay, you know, you said next year it's gonna take time, but things take time. I think it's time for the Police Department to start investigating with this drug and liquors over there to make it safe for kids to even pass through there. My point, thank you.
Thank you. We'll definitely take that under advisement.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Mr. General, is, are there any other comments?
No, no more members. The public registered their intent to speak.
Thanks, thanks. Just wanted to wish everybody a Happy New Year. We celebrated Dr. King's birthday and, and remembered all the wonderful things that Dr. King, and my dad knew in March with Dr. King, and other civil rights folks did, and so, you know, my, my hope is that, that we as a community, and that was Dr. King, it was about bringing people together. And so, you know, it's, it's, it's great to have disagreement, it's important to have disagreements and different thoughts, but we need to, we need to come together, and we need to, to be civil with each other. And so, I, I think that's more important, especially in communities like New Brunswick, than, than ever before. And so, you know, when people come up to a mic and they curse me and they pray that I get hurt, that's not civil, and that's inappropriate, and, and I think, I hope we can move beyond that and really focus on what's important when it comes to our students, our parents, our teachers, our family, our administrators, and our residents. But with that, I'll move on to the consent agenda, item number thirteen. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
And I'll make a note before we get a motion, that the motion, the consent agenda will be amended to table Resolution H, as in Harry. So do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda without Resolution H? So moved.
I make the motion that we accept the agenda without the H being tabled, with the letter H being tabled.
All right, so what I'll do is I'll take Mrs. Seawood as the motion, Mr. Ortiz as the second. And I'll take a roll call, Mr. Adorno.
Yes.
This is Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Ms. Seawood.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Varela.
Hello?
Well, this passer.
I think, I think we lost Ms. Varela. Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Wonderful.
Ms. Sevilla.
Did you get Ms. Sevilla?
Yes.
Motion approved.
I guess Ms. Varela had fallen off. The Finance Committee Report, obviously, is there a motion to accept the Finance Committee Report as, as presented?
I, I make a motion to accept it.
I second.
There's a second.
I second.
Just for the record, Dr. Caldwell, I see Ms. Varela here, she's muted, so I'm sure I've asked her to unmute, so hopefully she'll, will work through that and will get her vote.
Sorry, I couldn't get it to unmute.
Yes, I noticed that. So, Ms. Varela, your vote on the consent agenda?
Accept.
Okay. I'll take a vote for the finance report since we have a motion and a second. Mr. Adorno?
I, yes, I'm staying on page five.
So noted. Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
Ms. Ortiz.
Yes.
Seawood.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes, but I'm staying on page five.
Ms. Varela.
Yes.
Sevilla.
Yes, I'm staying on page six.
So noted. Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
There's a second.
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Thank you all very much, and I hope everyone has a wonderful twenty, twenty-two. Good night.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Have a good night, everyone. Good night, everybody.
All right, good night, everybody.
Good night.